Alright, whereas the Town Council of Dumfries has convened a closed session on our April 4th, 2023 pursuant to the affirmation of recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas Virginia Code 2.2-3712 requires certification by the Town Council that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore being resolved that the Town Council hereby certifies by vote only public business matters lawfully exempt from open requirements by Virginia law would discuss a closed meeting to which certification resolution apply. Only such public business matters as were identified in the motion in which we went in closed session. On the motion made by myself, following resolution is adopted by the vote. During the discussion, seeing none, I will call for the vote. Mr. P?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Chair Pro Tem?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
And that's a yes for me. The motion carries seven zero. Alright, is there anything to report from the closed session? I want to make a motion, subject to a signed contract, that we hire this Tangilus Ennis to start as our Town Manager on April the 17th.
Second.
Second, we'll take it from the Vice Mayor. Alright, any discussion on the vote? It was a whole bunch of seconds. This is really good. Is there any discussion on the vote? Seeing none, I will call for the question. Mr. Phil?
Yes.
Mr. P?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Chair Pro Tem? Vice Mayor?
Yes.
And that's a yes for me. The motion carries seven zero. Congratulations. Next on our agenda is the approval of the dinner.
I will leave for the next.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Alright, seeing any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, I call for the question. Ms. Peterson?
Hi.
Mr. Brown?
Hi.
Mr. P?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Chair Pro Tem?
Ah.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
And that's a yes for me. Alright, next on our agenda is the closed, oh, citizen comment. Citizen comment period. I think any citizens signed up to speak?
So not tonight.
Alright, were there any citizens here signed up that didn't get a chance to sign up? Alright, seeing none, it will be mayor and council comment time. Alright, Mr. Brown, do you have any comments tonight?
No, sir, Mayor, thank you.
Alright, Mr. P, you have any comments tonight?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that's tuning in and to all our residents and surrounding communities, that we be mindful that we are entering the Easter holiday, which will pre, there will be a lot of traffic this weekend. Cars are going to be moving out and about, and we ask that everyone just be safe and mindful of the children as they are still on spring break. Just thank you to all of our students that are being successful in their courses. Then also...
I can do something. Mr. Phil?
No comments.
Ms. Peterson?
No comment.
Chair Pro Tem?
Okay, I might have to work that out in a second, but I'm gonna keep it brief. Just wanted to extend congratulations to Ms. Ennis. We're looking forward to working with you. But in addition to that, I definitely want to thank Ms. Provost White for your work for these last few months, for really stepping in and stepping up where we need you to take care of this. We really appreciate it. So I just want to remind everybody also, the Exponement Clinic Second Annual will be on April 22nd from nine to one. And then again, on the, the next day, here at Garrison Park, we will have Autism Appreciation Day. It's a family fun event. We're gonna have a petting zoo, we'll have a bouncy house, it'll be ice cream, everything is free. Please bring the kids unless we celebrate those with autism. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to piggyback off of everything Chair Pro Tem said and expand a little bit on that same information. So, welcome to Ms. Ennis to the Town of Dumfries. We are looking forward to a long and prosperous relationship with you. Ms. Provost White, thank you very much for stepping up to the plate. I know it was a daunting task, and you handled it with grace, and we appreciate that you did so. And for the rest of the staff, I know it was a transition, and you all stayed the course, and we appreciate everything that you all have done as you transitioned along with us through this process. And as far as next week, the Exponement Clinic coming up later this month, I want to remind everybody that the Exponement Clinic, as Chair Pro Tem mentioned, is going to be held April 22nd here in the Town of Dumfries. It is our Second Annual Exponement Clinic. One thing that is very important to remember about the Exponement Clinic this year, which is different from last year, is that registration is required. As far as registration is concerned, however, the last day to register for the Exponement Clinic is this coming Saturday, April 8th. You must register in advance for the Exponement Clinic. The pre-registration is required so that you can have all the information prepared for you when you get to the clinic, so that it can be a smoother process for you, and also so that you'll know ahead of time whether or not you can actually be serviced. Because unfortunately, all previous infractions are not expungable, and this will save you time as well as save time of the volunteers who are there. So please take a few minutes to pre-register. You can look for me on social media at V A M S N A percent on all platforms to find information about the link to pre-register. Pre-registration is required by this Saturday in order to participate in the Exponement Clinic on April 22nd. I do hope that we are able to help you. If you do not need these services, you may know someone who does, so please pass along that information. We will be there April 22nd to help you. I look forward to seeing you all there. I yield, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, citizens of our town. April, spring, the weather has changed. The wind was blowing like crazy this weekend, up to seventy miles, but I'm glad everybody, I think March wanted to give you a little bit more kite flying season with the wind. But welcome to April. I definitely want to attach myself to all of my colleagues' comments and give an appreciation to Jonay for the great job she's done stepping in. We know that transition and change is one of the constants that we have in life, and nobody likes change, but it is a constant that we have in life. And so, we appreciate everybody being able to adapt and to roll with the changes and the punches and a way to really step in and really gain that type of experience, that one of those type of experience that you in that game. To everybody who supported you in that process, from on behalf of the entire council, we appreciate everybody who stepped up and really carried the weight of the load and continued to press the town forward to get us to this point right here. We celebrate so many things in the month of April, from autism acceptance to appreciation to awareness to, you know, the pastor got up and told us that it's make sure that we come out to Easter. Some of our other brothers are celebrating, what is it, Ramadan right now, is that what it is? Yep. And so, there are all kinds of celebrations, National Day. I found out there's some other national days in the month of April that I want to share for your awareness. The police officers like this is alcohol awareness this month, so there's all kinds of campaigns out around that. It's National Card and Letter Writing Month. Hey, that's a lost art, writing cards and letters to people. Who does that anymore? But it's a national day. It's National Lawn Care Month. Remind people the importance of a healthy lawn and what to do with your lawn. It's, some of you may like this, some of you may, but it's National Pickleball Month. Any pickleball players out there? Not me, I know that we're talking about pickleball. School Library Month, and it's National Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. The one I always like to highlight every year is National Minority Health Month. I think this is important time for us to raise awareness about the importance of a proven health, especially the health of the racial ethnic minority communities. Dumfries is about forty percent Hispanic and thirty-eight percent African American, and there are a lot of health disparities in our community, which is why this council and our comprehensive plan, as well as in our resolutions, promote healthy eating and active living. The 2023 theme for National Minority Health Month is Better Health Through Better Understanding. And I encourage everyone to join them in their theme this year, as they share resources and they address health literacy, language access, and more. And I think we all can do our part to promote health and equity for all members of our community. Tonight, we're here to review, at the presentational course, but we're here to review and discuss our annual budget and our town fee schedule. I wanted to emphasize the importance of this presentation, as it sets the course for our town's financial future. Our budget reflects your Town Council's priorities and vision as a community, and it's important that we ensure that our resources are allocated in a fair and equitable manner. The budget presentation tonight will give us a detailed look at how your tax dollars are being spent, and how we can make the most of the resources as they are being allocated. I encourage the citizens, the staff, everyone to pay close attention to the presentation. In the next coming days and weeks, you'll be able to ask questions, and you'll be able to also provide your feedback. Your input is invaluable as we work to create a budget that reflects the needs and the priorities of our community. I'm committed to ensuring that our town is physically responsible and sustainable, and I believe that the budget presentation is an important step into achieving those goals. Let us continue to work together as a community to build a stronger and more prosperous community. Your council had a retreat last in February, and we are committed to ensuring our community's strategic focus areas are as follows: a well-managed government, we're focused on economic development, we're focused at our infrastructure, public safety, and a new initiative we came up out of our retreat with, was civic engagement. Because we're committed to engaging our community. I want to say thank you, and I look forward to working with all of you to build a healthy and more prosperous community as we move forward. Those are my remarks for today. Next on our agenda is reports and presentation. First is the long-awaited report. We're glad that the Executive Director, Dr. Robert Snyder from the Omni Ride, is here to give us a community update about our transit system here in the town and the surrounding communities. Stockton?
Thank you very much. Wonderful to see you all again. I've seen many of you at different meetings, and it's great to continue my nighttime tour of Prince William County this week. But we have our commission meeting this week. You're all, of course, welcome to come join us on Thursday as we discuss transportation in the region. So, moving forward, we'll give you a, just a brief overview of who we are as an organization. We are Transit Operations for Prince William County, Manassas, Manassas Park. We also serve Stafford County currently, and we'll have some expansion down to Spotsylvania, which we'll talk about. We're also the co-owners of BRE. BRE, they operate their own service, but we have a joint operations board that includes not only the PRTC Commission members, but also some MVTC. So it has a representation from Arlington, Alexandria, Fairfax, Fairfax County, City of Fairfax possibly sometimes, depending on who gets appointed, as well as the jurisdictions for the PRTC footprint. We're also alternative mode developers, meaning we work extensively for van pool programs. So if you see those van pools zipping up and down the hot lanes, we have one of the largest van pools in the country. We're number three, high in Seattle and Houston. So all of those van pools, and we have creative ways where we use those miles to help generate revenue, which helps fund our transit system, and we're also regional leaders. We chair committees. One of our staff members was the chair of the northern, was actually the DMV Bus Operations Workforce. So that's everyone from almost to Baltimore, all the way down to Prince William County. And our staff led that. That included Wamata, that included Prince George's County, that included Montgomery County and beyond. So we have leadership in safety and security. We are the recipients of the TSA Gold Standard Award. We are the only bus transit system in the region to receive that. Our only other people in the region who enjoyed that are Wamata and BRE. So we are distinct in our role and what we play. Next slide. A footprint of who we are, 150 buses. We have two major operations facilities. Most of you know of our one over there in Woodbridge, not too far from IKEA. We're right over behind Potomac Festival on Telegraph Road. We have another one built in Manassas on the I-66 Corridor, very, very close to the digital gateway, which you read all about, and inside Nova and other locations. We'll leave it there. Our service footprint is inbound, you know, the major locations, DC Tyson Center and the Pentagon. Those are the real trip generators of where people want to go. But we're operating from as far out as Haymarket, from afar out of Stafford, and of course, points in between. While we don't serve Falkirk County, in between those two points, we're serving Prince William. We're serving Manassas. We're serving Manassas Park. We're also serving Dumfries. Who are we? Six jurisdictions. I've mentioned them already, but I'll cap them again. Three major counties, Prince William, Stafford, Spotsylvania in geographic order, and then in geographic order, cities of Manassas Park, Manassas, and Fredericksburg. So those are the, the three areas in which we operate service locally, are Prince William, Manassas, Manassas Park. And between those three entities, plus the funding we receive from DRPT and FTA, and that includes the toll revenues that help fund transit operations, our annual budget is eighty-six million dollars this year proposed. So quite the volume of service. A lot of them, about twenty-six million of that is capital this year. Buses are expensive. And so we're looking at updating our fleet, taking care of facilities, and making upgrades to fueling facilities. So let's talk about our service, Omni Ride Express. Totally different presentation in 2019 than we would have in 2023. Two weeks to flatten the curve, L O L. What we have had now is a permanent telework culture, and it truly is. And that's not really a bad thing. Everyone says, well, isn't that horrible? No, because we had choking miserable traffic beforehand, and we have choking miserable traffic today. So what's the difference? The difference is it's, it's the same volume of cars spread across a different time period. It used to be really bad mornings and really bad evenings, but now, but with telework to shift, people only go in for the critical meeting. They stay home for all their Zoom calls. Personally, I love it because I've driven two hours to Richmond for a half hour meeting to drive two hours back, pay how much in gas, pay how much in tolls, pay how much in parking, et cetera, just for thirty minutes of FaceTime. There are smarter ways to do that, and we've been promoting things like TDM, Transportation of Van Management. Do you have to drag everyone in on Friday when it's the absolute worst traffic you can possibly have in the middle of summer on a Friday night? Of course not. So we don't look at these things as there are detriments to transit. We just recognize we, as an organization, have to morph. So what we're doing is we're adjusting to that shifting travel demand. We're not running all of our services every eight minutes out of Horn or Road between six and seven thirty. We're now moving to further spread out times, but operating later in the morning. So you'll see buses at nine, whereas before you wouldn't see one past eight thirty. We're now pushing it to ten thirty. We're rethinking long-distance travel, but really looking at ourselves as how can we do things more simply, and you'll see some of that come about. Next slide. This is what our average daily commuter bus service looked like. I think you can see roughly where the pandemic fell. We are about, right now, eighty percent proportional recovery. What that means is if you look at where the red line was and the blue line was, and then you follow it, you know, FY18, and then you follow it across, in terms of true ridership and service volume, we're about eighty percent of pre-pandemic. We are about to go through a next wave of service adjustments this June that will put us back to the ratios of performance, meaning if you counted up all the number of seats that went into DC and other locations in between, you would count up X number of seats, and Y of them would be full. Well, we're getting back to that ratio. And then the good news of doing this is there's a national driver shortage. We've struggled. Schools have struggled. Construction workers have, companies have struggled. This allows us to get back to basics, tighten up our safety protocols, really take advantage of that, train the workforce well, and then do appropriate hiring as demand returns. So we're not eliminating the service from the budget. We're just not operating it until the demand returns. If the demand returns and we have full buses, we add another trip. That's the way it should be to protect the taxpayers. Running empty buses isn't our advantage nor the taxpayer. Once you spend the money, it's gone. So we really do look at preserving those hours for need as opposed to just purpose. Next slide. So what have we done? We're reducing our number of trips to match that efficiency, which I described. We're adding distinct midday and later evening branded trips. We tuck midday trips when you need to leave DC and the Pentagon. We tuck them into the 234 schedule, or the Montclair schedule. We're just gonna pull all those out, and we're gonna have a Eastern Lot Connector in the middle of the day. It's the same service that you've had before, but it's a little confusing, because if you live in, for example, Lakewood, are you looking at the Montclair schedule? No. So we're simplifying being smarter. We're migrating to clock FaceTime, so you don't have to wonder, when does, does it come at twelve or eighteen? No, you'll know it comes on the twenties, twenty, forty, sixty. It makes it much easier for, for people to make decisions and understand when their trip departs. And we're doing that inbound as well as outbound. We're also increasing our commuter fares to bring in more federal funds to nine dollars a one-way trip. And to explain that, we're at six ninety. Pre-pandemic people rode about seven point five times a month, or seven, a week, excuse me. So if you add that up, and you do six ninety, we took about ninety percent of their federal benefits. Great. Post-pandemic, they're riding three point five times. So if we don't adjust the volume of revenue we bring in, we're serving the same number of humans, but they're not traveling as often. So in order to help bring in and sustain service, we need to collect more of that federal revenue. This isn't designed where if you have someone who, maybe they're working in service economy, they're one of the best bar chefs in all of DC, and they happen to live in Dumfries, they're like, I'm, I'm gonna get killed on this. That's not the goal. We'll have pass programs. The goal isn't to punish the residents of Prince William County, right? The goal is to extract more revenue from the federal government, because that's what we need to sustain services. That's key. Moving forward. Next slide. Let's jump to local service, which probably excites you the most. Local service patterns, we had no local service reductions during the pandemic. We drastically reduced commuter services for about three months, and then brought it back in, in appropriate ways. The service retail economy, as we've all seen, was very slow to bounce back, but boy, oh, boy, did the online economy take off. And so that's been one of the more interesting things, is they have siphoned the drivers. They've siphoned off also our customers. Our customers used to work at Dunkin'. Now they work for Amazon. So now they're, they're taking different roles. They're not relying on us as much, but it has bounced back. And that delivery economy has had a huge impact on our trip volumes, and seniors have not returned. They were about fifteen to twenty percent of our services, especially out of Manassas, in service to the senior centers in Eastern Prince William. And with the health concerns and everything that occurred, they've just not returned. There is a lack of trust of being in the community. And one of the initiatives we're gonna be having this spring is we're doing a senior summit in June to pull together seniors and transit. We're bringing in law enforcement with the specific purpose to reengage that population, to know it's also safe on our fleet. You know, you don't have to worry about what's being told on the news about all these things that are happening. Our fleet is safe, our service is safe, and we're here to take care of that. And then, one of the great things that we've been able to do is we had Saturdays come back at a higher proportion than Monday through Friday, which was nuts for us. We didn't get it. And what it was is people now were able to get around and do things on Saturdays because they don't have to run all their errands. So our Saturday ridership returned quicker, and it prompted us to add Sundays. Next slide. So we added at the bottom, but we added new Sunday service in Eastern Prince William. It's the first time in Prince William County's history of seven-day-a-week service, and we are thrilled to do it. I hope you've seen our ad campaigns on our wrapped buses up and down Prince William. It's church day, it's shopping day, it's go out and have fun with your friends day, go bowling, enjoy a ballgame, whatever you want to do. But we continue to operate our local services, including our services to the Springfield Metro, fare free, as a zero fare program. And there's a philosophy behind, philosophy behind that. You heard me describe the subsidy of the federal workforce. There is no subsidy for the local workforce. We don't have great transit service in the community, and it's something that I started here six years ago yesterday. And it's something that caught me right away. I mean, for what we charge for fares, we have an equity issue. So many of our best and brightest leave the county, and they have that transportation subsidized. There's almost a penalty for remaining in the county and riding transit. So with the pandemic, we took a good hard look at it, what would the cost economy be, what would the economy of scale be? And for us, it makes sense to remain zero fare. Will that be forever? It's dependent on our commission. I'm very much in favor of it until we're able to rebuild services where, hey, dollars coming into the system will add more service at an appropriate level. But right now, adding in the service would bear, adding in fares would barely move the needle. And we're trying to rebuild our ridership. We're trying to fill every bus, every seat, every trip. And my philosophy is until then, should we really worry about chasing two-dollar fares? And that's a philosophical question. That's where I think, and as of now, Prince William County Board concurs. Will that remain that way? To be determined. But we're thrilled to be able to do it. That also includes our new service that we have in Manassas, which has been really our test pen. There's only, there's been three fixed routes out there, and it really allows us to, quite frankly, monkey around with service. We can rearrange route. If it doesn't work, we put it back. It doesn't break, doesn't break the bank, and it doesn't really impact ridership. Right before the pandemic, we retooled the routes, and it's paid off. The service we've developed and redesigned, the ridership is booming, but we did have one route that was kind of left out in the cold. Because when we really consolidated services and connected neighborhoods with businesses and jobs, that one route that traveled around and served only houses didn't have a lot drawing in. So we were, we implemented something called microtransit, which is our version of Uber, for, for lack of a better term. It's an OmniRide branded vehicle. It's an OmniRide employee through our contractor, Keolis, and they're trained, and they're, they have an app. You download the app, you schedule your trip, it calculates when we can get you, and we come pick you up and take you where you want to go. It's just like that. And what we do is we take you within the zone, or to the nearest fixed route that can get you out of the zone if that's where you want to go. And we're going to be, as you'll see on the map, implementing a similar service here, hopefully, in Dumfries Quantico and Triangle. Next slide. So this is our daily average ridership for local bus. I only have this charted through November of 2022. As you can see, we had a little bit of a service drop-off in FY18 for our local service, but now our ridership has actually surpassed what it was in FY18 for local ridership. Our numbers for March preliminarily really blew the doors off of our expectations for the spring. I think the warm weather always helps, even if it is seventy miles an hour. People want to take refuge in a bus versus walk down the street, I guess. So we'll, we'll take what we can get, and we can get it. So that's our ridership growth, and it continues to grow as we continue to promote. That includes that Sunday service. And one of the amazing things has been, we have seen the growth in Saturday service despite adding the Sunday. We assumed that we would siphon ridership from Saturday into Sunday. We have not. The Saturday ridership has actually strengthened, and Sunday ridership is already at about sixty-five percent of service. That's phenomenal. We were expecting to be thirty-five to forty percent within the first year. We're at sixty-five percent six months in. We'll take it. And that's a complete win. So we're thrilled about that. So what's happening in Eastern Prince William? As I mentioned, we were, we retooled right before the pandemic. What we did not want to do is during a pandemic, try to retool the eastern side of things, because we believe in getting out in the community, as you'll see, we have a ton of events scheduled or planned. And before we go out and figure out what we should do, let's talk to the community. Well, the community wasn't really engaging in Zoom calls, right? They might, but you're not going to be able to sit down with people and talk transit for half an hour through Zoom. It just wasn't gonna work. So between that and figuring out what is the new post-pandemic ridership pattern, we now have that understood, and we're now implementing a $2.5 million budget enhancement for local, new, improved, and more frequent service. So we've reduced the amount of service pouring into DC, and we're taking those dollars and reinvesting it back in Prince William County, specifically Eastern Prince William County. And really, those community-focused type services. So we're trying to connect... Here's a great example. A lot of residents who live in Dumfries, if they have to choose their Walmart, which one do they choose? Do they choose the one at Potomac Mills, or do they choose the one right up row one? We're trying to give high-frequency service up in that corridor. What other locations, they want to get to Fettler Plaza. They want to get out to, in, further out in Dumfries, I call it Shopper's Plaza, where the Shopper's Grocery Store is. There's not a transit connection there. That's in, from a pure planning standpoint, it's silly. We're fixing that, as you'll see. So we're gonna be doing extensive public outreach. We've been doing it already for our microtransit services, and we're, it takes a lot of work. We have to create new schedules. We're bringing in new signs. We have to come up with better approved route names, which we have. But we're also simplifying it to make it easier for passengers to ride. You guys have no idea how hard it is to get a shelter in the ground. You think, just go buy one. It's, it's, it's like trying to build Route One. I mean, it's, it's, it's that kind of, it's about fifty thou, thirty to fifty thousand dollars to put in a bus shelter, because we have to have engineered site plans. If VDOT expects us to construct these as if a hurricane- VDOT expects us to construct these as if a hurricane is gonna pick it up and throw it right at your house. So we have to be prepared for that. That's something we continue to work through. I gotta, DRPT has been a champion of it, but it's a challenge because VDOT's loaded with a bunch of engineers and sometimes that doesn't balance out. We love our engineers. Believe me, we've got some that we work closely with, but that makes it very hard. And when you have older communities, you know, I was sitting here reading Virginia's first hundred town. We have some historic things we have to protect. And so when you put all those things together, it makes infrastructure a big challenge for us, so it takes some time. Next slide. So what we're doing is I'm gonna focus on the top part since we are here in Dumfries. We have our Dumfries local, a Route One local and a Dumfries connector. Those are the big three. We're renaming our services with nine routes and five routes. Why? Nine, they originate east, west of I-95. Think of the interstate, nine, five. So if you see a five, you know it originates on the eastern side of I-95. If you see a nine, so now you know. If you're standing there and you need to get back to Woodbridge, it might be a five, might be a nine. Depends on which side of Woodbridge. But if you need to get to Dale City, you know you need a non-route. It's that simple of trying to make it easier to understand services and figure things out. So next slide. What we've done, and I've just highlighted this, we're not gonna drill into it today, but the nearest transfer hub is Grand Park Road. And what you see is you see the connections I've highlighted in red of those three routes and where they pop up inside the system. So you can see a lot of service to Grand Park Road. And this is in your packet, so please feel free to dig in deeply. But now you can see that there's a route from, from the Dumfries area to the OmniRide Transit Center, no problem. There's also one to Nova, right? There's also, if you get to the OmniRide Transit Center, you'll transfer to Chin, Tackett's Mill, Telegraph Road, Commuter Lot. But you know you have access to all those routes located at Grand Park Road, including the Woodbridge Biary. Knowing, again, community and corridor-based travel patterns. Residents tend to live, shop, or they tend to shop and work as close as they can to where they live. So connecting those dots, we don't think we have all the answers. We think we've done the best we can. So you'll see, moving on, we'll come up with a few things here. This is the, the map of the general service area. We've got some websites that we can steer you to. I've got a couple of slides that'll drill in for you. But moving into the next slide here, you can see that example of the Dumfries service area and that new route targeting Fettler Park, Shoppers, et cetera. It's our Dumfries connector. That's really the gem of this. We've already been operating a Route One connector. We've already been operating the Dumfries service, but what we've been missing is that connector. And that's exactly what that route is. It's really right now the gem of our service design because we're moving things around. But this is really where we're expanding our footprint further up two thirty-four into the Montclair community and tying in not just, okay, yeah, it's great to go to Chick-fil-A. It's great to go to IHOP on Sunday morning. But there's good jobs out there. There's medical employment. There's a lot of opportunity. And as, as Mayor described, if you're talking about healthcare access, this is healthcare access. This is when you need those nighttime services. This is where you need, you got off work at, at five o'clock and you need to get into that urgent care. There, there's opportunity with this service. So one thing I wanna point out is how do you figure out where all these, all these are? Because you're gonna wanna drill down and figure out how does this affect the town? How does this affect my neighbor? How does this affect my neighborhood? So as I, you could see in red, I've blocked out our website. Easy to find. Next slide. It's just omniride.com. So if you go to omniride.com, you'll see bus service at the top. Click on that and there's a link that just says about the Eastern Prince William restructure. You click on that bottom box. Next slide. And there's a breakdown of all of our different activities, but we have created a dedicated Dumfries local service webpage. So if you click to that, you can then go through and drill down into what we're going to be doing. We have some different public hearings set. Schedules vary, but we have one. Next slide. Oops, sorry. Yep, this is right. Go back one. Sorry, my fault. Forgot the order of slides. So this is all the different maps that will break down the service in the Dumfries local proposed routes. Gives you a chance to drill in, figure out how it affects things, and I'm easy to find. So I'm happy to come back and talk to you, answer questions. We can do a Zoom call, a phone call, or I'm happy to come to before Town Council meet with you just to explain the types of services. But these are the different routes and then we focus on times based on the feedback we get. So that's step one is getting the lefts and rights in order. Then we start talking about when do the trips need to occur? Because the trips need to connect with services that get to Woodbridge, that get to the Ferlaza Building, right? That get over to Potomac Mills for those jobs and opportunities. Next slide. Thursday, April twenty-seventh. Stop on by. We have a public hearing outreach right here in this building. So this is important. We, we have one on Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, and we have one April twenty-seventh. And next slide, you'll see, those are all the other ones we have planned beyond the public hearing. We, we genuinely make the effort to check the box on the public hearing. That way, it's at night, we follow all the rules, but quite frankly, that's not when residents wanna talk to us. They're tired or they're at work. There's other things in life, so we put a lot of energy out there. We ride the bus. We ask you what you think. We set up at our transit facility and we give out goodies and snacks and drinks and say, hey, come tell us what you think. Give us some feedback. We'll, we'll be setting up at Chin Park. We'll be setting up at Toto's Markets. All sorts of different aspects because we want to hear from our riders. And also some of our non-riders that I wish I could ride, but that matters to us too. And I'm very proud of the marketing and outreach team. We won, we call it Team Three-Sixty. It's a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree view of who we're serving. We're serving the business community. We're serving the political community. We're serving the restaurant community, the hotel, the motel, but also neighborhoods, senior centers. And if we can't do a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree view of look at our community and say, who are we, who are we missing? Then we're not gonna have a complete picture. And by the way, we don't always get it right. We, we still miss somebody, but each time we miss them, we add them to the list and we get better next time. So we're thrilled to be here to talk to you about these very things. Again, I believe if you're stressed enough, go to our website, drill into those maps and schedules. I could literally talk about every one of those till four in the morning, but I don't think we wanna do that, me included. I can, but don't want to. But I believe that's my last slide. Yes. Easy to reach. Bob Schneider, omniride.com. Sharon can al, can always help find me. She knows. Come see me Thursday if you want. But any questions I can answer for you?
Dr. Snyder, I just wanna say thank you for your thorough presentation. I envisioned when you came here that we was gonna have all our technology working because this is so important for our citizens to be able to see this. So I may have to have you come back and tour around.
Not a problem.
But, but, but thank you. The, the, the part that I, I was excited to look, listen to, you know, we had an MDTA meeting where they talked about, this is even supplementing the school bus drivers because of the school bus driver shortages and, and having routes that are actually connecting to the high schools and the middle schools and kids are able to, I think in other jurisdictions like Alexandria and stuff, the school buses are almost being obsolete because people are riding that. And I don't know if you can speak to.
Yeah, it's, it really is a density issue. We do have some ridership out of, for example, Garfield High School. But when, you know, one of the challenges we face is when they built one of the new high schools in Eastern Prince William of Colgan, it's in an island. The closest thing is, I think, the dump in terms of a trip generator. So it's not exactly high transit utilization to get there. So one of the things we're encouraging is, hey, if you're building new schools, build them in the neighborhoods, build them along the routes. Yes, the property may be more expensive, but you're gonna have to do how much more roadway improvement when there's all, there's all these resources existing. So that's one of the challenges that, that we face. But Alexandria, Arlington, there are definitely Fairfax. You know, they have more dense pockets. We don't have that as much, but we do have that opportunity in Route One. That's why it's great to have Freedom High School not far from the Nova Community College campus, not far from the Ferlaza Building. And it's easy for us to string those things together with more service. It becomes a great opportunity for Eastern Prince William and to build on the strength of the town such as Dumfries, Triangle, et cetera.
Chair brought to.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I wanna commend you for your excellent work. I am no stranger to OmniLink. I grew up here. I remember when OmniLink stopped running at six P.M.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so you've really done an excellent job of hearing the needs of the community and meeting those needs. And when you talk about connecting communities, that's very important because we know that when people don't have access to transportation, they don't have access to opportunities. So that's very key. I do have one question for you. I know that accessing Quantico was an issue because of something outside of your control, but is that something that, to your knowledge, that's being worked on, being brought?
It is. With this microtransit project, we're able, it's gonna be a smaller pool of employees and they will either have access to the DBID's program, but we're having a backup program through taxis. So one of the interesting things, I'll give a little bit of history on that, is, and I'll say, I lived in Quantico for the first four months I was here. I lived in Fort Avenue. So I was a Quantico resident for my first couple of months here, just as a civilian, no military ties. And it was one of those things of the volume of service it took to drive that distance. And you had, we only made eight trips a day, I think it was, because it was every ninety minutes. If you missed one of those, you were, you were cooked. You had no other options. You were calling a taxi. Well, it always made me wonder what would happen if we used a taxi service and let you come and go whenever you wanted. Right? It would be a whole lot easier and be a whole lot smarter. Well, of course, the base closure, so the public forced that. And there's been an evolution through there. And we've been now offering trips up and down Route One all the way to Walmart for the Quantico residents anytime they needed to go somewhere. We just meet them at the transit shelter, take them to any points along Route One and they're good to go. Now what we're doing is we're, we're really making that a formalized service, but also including, that's what the zone will also include, heading up to Shoppers Plaza as well as over to Fettler Park. So we're really reimagining the zone and giving that opportunity. So it might be an OmniRide branded vehicle. It might be a taxi. But either way, schedule through your app and it's all taken care of.
And even with the taxi, it's still?
Zero fare.
Okay, that's excellent. I do have my, so do you still offer deviations? That might be a, a throwback.
We, we do. We no longer have deviations in Western Prince William and that was part of our experimentation. And we have it proposed in the budget to eliminate the deviations. So then, so to explain for council isn't aware, if a person wants to go to somewhere off route, then they can request the deviation and the bus will jump off Route One and meander through a neighborhood and drop, drop Mayor Wood off right at his house and then get back on the route. Well, that's great. Sounds great. But what if he's not going in there today and we're all on the bus together? We have to build that time into the schedule. So now we sit and we wait and we wait and we wait. And then the bus goes. We have to build all that time into the deviation. Plus, if you're a person with a disability, do you really want everyone knowing you have a disability? Do you really wanna have that deviation and having your safety and security placed out there? So we are the largest system that I can find in the United States that still does deviated fixed route. And granted, a whole bunch of our fleet is commuter. But in terms of who does deviated fixed route, tiny communities in Montana or rural Illinois or something like that. We're too big of a community not to have paratransit and it's, again, an equity issue and an opportunity issue. And now the bus can move faster up and down the road, more direct routes, get people where they wanna go. And so hopefully, budgets get approved. As I, we did our sing for our supper today with Prince William County. And if all goes well, well, my, that'll be part of that Eastern restructure that we implement this next fiscal year.
Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Two things. The, the public hearing, is the public hearing simply a listening session? And I noticed that it is at ten A.M., which is during a lot of people's working hours, and I didn't see that there was a Zoom link. Will you all have a Zoom link?
It'll, it'll be a presentation, but we have multiple, we'll have multiple other events for people to attend.
Oh, okay.
That's just one where we're trying to check the box of a nighttime and a daytime. If we only do nighttime, we're criticized for not having a daytime. So we, we do day and night and then we move the locations and we do the listening sessions.
Okay.
So lots and lots of opportunity. I'll also say this, if you ever have a civic group that you want us to come talk to, more than, trust me, there's a lot of us who are excited about this and we're happy to come out whenever or wherever to talk to a community group, your local Kiwanis Club, your Rotary, et cetera. Happy to do that.
Okay. The other thing is the, the roads will be opening soon. I believe we're scheduled now for March twenty-four, January, January twenty-four. So are you all planning for service to that area because there will be lots of jobs there? And that's a pretty long walk considering, you know, our densely commuted, community in this area here, so.
They have not approached us for funding to help support any type of route, so we presume they're gonna have their own lot circulator, as I've worked with large institutions like that. They tend to operate in a silo and have their own branded service, et cetera. If there's some interest in that, we're more than willing to meet with them and talk, but in terms of a resource allocation, we're focused more on the corridor. And then if there's some type of other arrangement we wanna make, we can certainly talk to them.
So what my question is, is as far as, so I know you have services that go up Route One and if you have a service that goes to thirty-four, what I'm talking about or looking for is a stop that will get folks in the vicinity at least if they're going there for employment.
Uh, they'll be, if it's on one of the major roads, yes.
Okay, so that's my question. Okay, thank you.
Trans. W. P. Well, well said on your presentation. Excellent. Well put together. For your, your twenty, forty, sixty, is that on your peak hours or your non-peak?
That would be during, that's an example of commuter times. So that might be out of the two thirty-four lot. It might be on the fifteens, the thirties or the forty-fives. Or, or the hour. It would just depend on the volume of service. But we're gonna match those times based upon the volume, the, the number of seats we, that we really need to fill.
So it's in a testing phase pretty much right now?
It, it's what happens in fixed route services on most cities. Most cities, the bus comes by on the tens or it comes by on the fifteens. That's, if you're, if you're from an urbanized area, you know that. Hey, it comes by every ten minutes. You know that. It doesn't come, if it comes by on the twelve, it's because you're mid-block. You're between the tens and, you, you just learn that pattern. We've not done that with commuter service. We've said, okay, we'll put a bus in at six twelve. We'll put another one at six seventeen. Then how about one at six twenty-one and six thirty-two? Why? And the answer is because that's what someone scheduled a long time ago. Well, we're not doing that anymore. I wanna make it easier for, a lot of residents moved here over the last three years during the pandemic and they haven't commuted with us. They are now calling and saying, okay, I've gotta be in the Pentagon four days a week. I, I need help. And so we wanna simplify the understanding of not just our local services, but also our commuter services. The turnover that we have due to the federal government, we have to do something smarter to map through that. Otherwise, people, it's easy to drive. You just, you just type in Pentagon into your phone and press the button and there you go. Or whether it's in Roslyn or Crystal City, you just do it because you don't understand. And we're gonna be also partnering, hopefully, with VDOT and DRPT to start to do some rebranding and upgrades to parking lot lots. They look a little gross. We don't own them. And so we wanna put a little bit of time, love and energy into helping them recognize the utility and value of having, you know, first-class facilities for a first-class workforce that goes into a first-class national capital. So if we could put all those things together and then you're, you have that facility inside first-class communities. And that's what we wanna reflect, reflect more of.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, so my last bullet here. There's been several talks often in, in many years and within this town here of our citizens when they have to do business in Manassas at the courthouse, pretty much, right? There's oftentimes when they have to be here at eight, eight-thirty. I'm hearing eight, eight-thirty the most. Are we considering a route? I, I get to, from the transit there, Prince William Parkway. Often they take the Dumfries route to the transit, transfer over. Prince William Parkway is one, is one of your.
That's the route, yes.
Are we considering a Dumfries to Manassas route?
Not right now. The volume of ridership just isn't there. We, we struggle already with ridership from our transit center to Manassas. It's Route ninety-six. It just does not, it historically doesn't have the volume. So it's part of a long-term strategic plan as, as there's more density along two thirty-four, for example. As Micron maybe starts, you know, they ramp up their facility and they're doing more hiring, then there might be more opportunity there. But for now, there really just isn't the viability for that in our near-term plans.
Okay, so. If so, could we consider a early route from the Dumfries area that way for consideration?
I'll certainly add it to our, our plan.
For the town's residents, because I'm hearing that it's a task if they have to.
Oh, no question. No question. If I were to wanna get over. At eight-thirty would be a yeoman's effort.
Nine fifteen, nine twenty, they're late. They have to deal with the court that way. And then my, my question is just that. Or, and of consideration, is there anything we can look into to see if the, a early morning route? Because I, I believe the rest of the day is okay from, you know, to get from that, from Manassas. But I'm hearing a, a crowd for that, that route early in the morning. Maybe it's just a one-time route, you know? But if we can look into that and take that in consideration and put that on the table, maybe, maybe it works. And, you know, I, not all day, but at least that hour, that early hour part. So our residents and citizens can make that, that timeframe that they have to be up into the courthouse when they have to conduct business up at, up at the courthouse.
And one other thing that we're really working with Prince William to try to address some of those issues is, is can that service be made available at Ferlaza Building? And that would be a great ask from the Town Council. If, if you're forcing this issue and it's only in one place and you're not. If, if you're forcing this issue and it's only in one place, and you're not providing the service to help people get there, is there a way that there could be that parallel service at the Ferlazzo Building for that, again, that short time in the morning? So there might be some different ways to attack that, that maybe we can work together creatively.
Yeah, because I believe that going to the PRTC and trying to get there is, is just, it's.
It's all day. It's, it's all morning.
It's, it's just undoable. They, they, they can't make it there. Then, then we have our citizens having to go back up there on the same type of scenario. And, um, now we have, having them getting hit twice. And, um, we don't have the access to get them there. But as far as public transportation goes, maybe an alternative is they, uh, I, I've also suggested this of using the taxi. The taxi costs someone close to almost sixty, seventy bucks to get from here just, and that was one way. So, uh, and it's, I, I've always thought about that and then hearing it often now, um, of some type of consideration from the Dumfries to the Manassas courthouse area, especially before, to, to arriving at the Manassas courthouse before eight o'clock now. If they have to be there eight-thirty, nine o'clock, that's different, but you're there. You know, it, it's something that we, if, if we can look at that, you know, take that into consideration for our residents. All right, thank you much, and again, presentation well said.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, sir, for your presentation. Uh, it, it, um, appears that you love your job. Who's this out? And I love that you love your job, because again, I, I was an OmniRider, was, uh, pre-COVID. Uh, however, you mentioned something about the microtransit, and that's new to me. You also talk about zero fares. Uh, is there a, a specific destination for the zero fares? Uh, and how, how do we get that information out to our community? Because this, this is the first time I've heard about.
I'll answer the last part first. Shout it. Drag people to the bus stop, throw them on board lovingly, and then we won't charge them. And then they'll know it's zero fare. But I'm sincere, uh, from the standpoint of, we, we promote it, we have zero fare on our header signs, letting the community know, we, we do social media outreach. It's just sometimes, there's a lot of noise in this region. There's a lot of information flowing out. And so we continue to try to promote and support the zero fare. And those, all, all of our local services, as well as our Metro Express, which runs to, from, um, our transit facility up to, uh, Frankonia Springfield Metro Station. So you can reach Metro for free. Seven days a week, by the way. Point that out. Uh, so that was the, I think I answered the, all the questions. Was there another one of them?
So, so next question is?
Oh, microtransit.
The Uber-type transportation, again, has led to me. Was not aware that you would, OmniRide was doing that. Can you access that from the simple OmniRide mobile app? Is, or is something different?
We have an app. It's not live in, in the eastern part of Prince William. But if you were a Manassas resident, for example, you lived over in Manassas Park, that route had a whopping two-point-five people per hour. It's a, and it was mostly the same people riding all the time. That route was a social club. You met with your friends, you had a good time, you got off the bus, went into McDonald's, I'm, I'm not kidding. Went into McDonald's, had a bite to eat, came out, got back on the bus, then maybe rode over to the Athletic Center. And then we're the senior center over there, uh, the Manassas Park. Got off, went inside, hung out for a while, come back out and go home. That was our ridership base. Of course, other stuff trickling in, but we didn't have high volumes of healthcare service. We didn't have high volumes of senior citizen ridership. It's heavily residential. And so there's not a lot of things that generate trips into Manassas Park. It's mainly trips leaving. And a lot of that community does, in fact, their plumbers, construction workers, the demographics of the region, they frequently have their own vehicle for those type jobs. So what we did is we took that route, which wasn't doing well, and we said, you know what? We think we can get a few more people per hour on the bus. So what we did is we eliminated that route and we put in a zone. So now there's a defined geographic zone, and if you are with, if you live outside the zone, just get to the zone. But you open up your phone, I'm here and I want to go to here. And what it does is it takes you anywhere inside that zone, picks you up, drops you off, zero fare. And if you want to leave the zone, like if you want to go up to Novo Community College is a great example. We'll take you to the nearest bus stop on the zone, drop you off at the bus stop, and then you'll connect in and catch your bus up to Novo Community College in Manassas. So that's the way we're, we're adjusting. Right now, if you have to walk a quarter of a mile, well, that's, okay, that's not too bad. That's about five minutes. But depending on your community, you might live on a road that has no sidewalks and speed limit's forty-five miles an hour. You might live, you know, five minutes up the road, but that five minutes might kill you. So instead, we've taken the approach of let's give rooftop access instead of road access. And we'll pick you up where you live and take you where you need to go. And so we're proposing bringing that to the Dumfries Quantico Triangle area because right now we just don't have the ridership to sustain returning a fixed route. But we still want to continue to serve the community. And when I say that, meaning, um, specifically Quantico. So Quantico is really the main driver of that. Dumfries already has the fixed routes. So it's not an issue of, we want to layer that in and make the connections between the community.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Brown, I, I didn't know until he presented it to us at the, uh, MBTA meeting that it was free. And I was like, oh, my gosh, we gotta, uh, get this out to the masses because, you know, all of us don't ride the bus. So I thought that this was important to get it out. Unfortunately, our live broadcast went down, but, uh, we'll do our best to be an advocate and really get the word out. Yes, he exudes transportation. He didn't tell none of his transportation jokes tonight and give us the history of the Boston train and some of those songs that's out there. But he is, uh, transportation, uh, through and through. So thank you, Dr. Snyder, for your presentation.
Also, the one thing that, um, I'm happy to do is I'm happy to come down and drag you onto a bus with me, and we can ride together. I have learned in our industry that I, I can put up a million billboards and I'll never get your attention. But I can bring you with me to go get a coke, a cup of coffee, a sandwich, go to a museum. Go ride and look at our community. I promise you, you haven't seen your community till you've seen it from a transit bus. And you, you say, no, I see my community every day. No, you don't. You see the road. You see license plates, you see sidewalks. You can't see over the, the neighbor's fence line. You ride a bus through a community, you can see things you've never seen before, and you'll see them in a different way. I promise you.
Well, thank you, sir, for your presentation.
My pleasure, my honor.
All right. We will move forward with our agenda because of the sake of time. Next on our agenda is our FY twenty-four proposed fiscal plan presentation. Today, for yours.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, it is my pleasure to present the proposed fiscal plan for fiscal year twenty-four as well as our five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-nine. First, I'd like to begin by thanking town staff and our town attorney for their hard work and support during this time of transition. I would also like to say thank you to the council for affording me this opportunity to serve as a town manager during the process of selecting our next town manager. And to the town residents, as we begin a new fiscal year, it will be my honor to continue to serve the community to the best of my abilities. The nation is seeing a great deal of economic upheaval. Over the net, over the past four years, average gas prices have risen, excuse me, risen one-point-five dollars from two dollars and seventeen cents per gallon um, to three dollars and twenty-two cents per gallon. This past Sunday, OPEC said they would cut the cost of crude oil production by three percent, sending prices of oil skyrocketing to eighty-four dollars a barrel, sending impending doom of higher prices at the pump just in time for the summer. Eggs have experienced an average inflation of two-point-seventy-two percent per year. In other words, eggs costing four dollars and twenty-one cents in the year of nineteen thirty-five would cost forty-four dollars and forty-seven cents in twenty-twenty-three. We would have purchased them in today's dollars. With federal interest rates at the highest they've been in sixteen years, bank failures and rising costs of goods and services, financial stability will be the key that maintains our town through the turmoil. We've crafted our fiscal year twenty-twenty-four budget with the focus on investing in our community and investing in our organization. Our budget, which is our strategic primary planning tool, is built on a solid foundation. This budget was developed in adherence and with sound financial practices. All revenues equal expenditures, and structural balances achieved with one-time revenues being dedicated only in support of non-reoccurring expensive, expenses. No transfer from the unassigned fund, um, balance were used to balance this budget. The, the published documents provide the public with a complete view of the town's finances, inclusive of debt service fund balance as well as capital projects. Our proposed capital budget, project, excuse me, budget continues to be fully funded and supported entirely with grants and pay-as-you-go cash, thus having no impact on our debt capacity. We also continue our commitment to performance-based budgeting using data and metrics to inform our decisions. Next slide, okay. Based on recommended improvements to our financial foundation and leadership from the town council, the town adopted new financial policies in September of twenty-twenty-two. The accomplishment of adopting strong financial policies last September established clear and consistent guidelines to provide the town, council staff and citizens with the framework for measuring our fiscal impact of government services against established fiscal parameters. Our next step will be to establish long-range capital planning, updated strategic and comprehensive planning, and the human capital necessary to execute the plan. These policies will also play a major role in our quest for bond ratings. Next slide. For the fourth year in a row, the town has received the distinguished budget presentation award from the Government Financial Officers Association for our FY twenty-three budget. The GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Awards Program encourages state and local governments to prepare budget documents of the very highest quality that reflect both the guidelines established by the National Advisory Council on State and Local Budgeting and the GFOA's best practices on budgeting. Staff continue to improve the budget based on constructive comments received by the GFOA to ensure our continued success in budget preparation and planning. Next slide. We continue to grow by design, not by default. Over the past four years, the town has seen continued growth in our planned budget revenue. Even in the years following the pandemic, local taxes have been able to grow, in some cases by double digits percentages. Between fiscal year twenty-twenty and fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, the town experienced a thirty percent growth rate. This year saw a growth rate of twenty-two percent. Double-digit growth for a small town of fifty-six-hundred people is unprecedented. Growth at this level will continue to assist the town in realizing our goal of Dumfries as a destination place and afford services to its residents on par with the surrounding localities and scale. Next slide. As revenue continue to grow, we are also growing our fund balance. Best practices indicate that the fund balance should be between thirty and sixty percent of budget revenues. Our fund balance is well within range at fifty percent of our proposed operating budget. This slide is actually in the back of your book. It didn't make the presentation booklet, so that's why, if you're looking for those numbers. Okay, our fund balance is well within range at fifty percent of our proposed operating budget, which is the five-point-three million shown in the bottom line. Next slide. Let's begin with revenue. The total proposed fiscal year twenty-four general fund budget is ten-point-eight million dollars. This represents a fifty percent increase from the previous fiscal year. Looking at the chart, our diverse revenue pool continues to reflect that our biggest revenue source is local taxes. Sales, meals and gaming tax continue to account for over sixty-six percent of the town's revenue, twenty percent more than fiscal year twenty-three. Next slide. Overall, we are projecting gains in nine tax categories. Revenues from real estate are up seven percent, attributed to increases in assessed values as well as new residential and commercial development within the town. Total local taxes are projected to be up by a hundred and fifteen percent overall. Our DMV select revenues continue to flourish with new contracts expected to increase revenues by seventy-four percent. These significant gains are attributed to the opening of the new Rose Gaming Resort with an anticipated opening date of January twenty-twenty-four and do not reflect a full year's worth of tax revenue from the facility. As a reminder, the gaming resort will feature eight new restaurants, phase one of a luxury hotel, fifteen thousand square foot of convention and cultural space with its anticipated opening date of January twenty-twenty-four. Next slide. Drilling down on four key areas, we can see increases in real estate and double-digit projections in transient meals and gaming tax. These four line items represent a hundred and twenty-six percent increase from last year's budget. Our team worked very diligently to adhere to best practices, improve our collections, keep expenditures in line and overall being good stewards of the taxpayer's resources. It is at this point that I encourage you as a council to begin thinking about the face of Dumfries and what it, and what does it mean for us to be a destination place. All of you, right now, will be able to realize long-range vision and improvements for the town that you only see in localities with large, expensive real estate tax bases. Next slide. This next slide shows how our real estate tax compares to other towns within the Northern Virginia region. As I say there, our staff has worked diligently to be efficient with existing resources while also creating new revenue streams that allow Dumfries to continue to enjoy one of the lowest real estate taxes. It is important that the budget for FY twenty-four is kept, is to keep the current real estate tax flat. Next slide. One last look at our future growth shows our next budget for fiscal year twenty-five in the realm of twenty million dollars. Fiscal year twenty-twenty-six will see a more modest growth after twelve-four months of gaming meals and transient tax revenues. With the aid of our financial consultant, we can begin to project long-range capital planning more than two years ahead. Next slide. Moving on to our investments in our organization, the focus for this year's budget is improving and increasing services and events. Our residents continue, excuse me, our residents concerned about having safe places for our children to recreate has been heard. We are only weeks away from our first-ever fitness court adjacent to Gin Memorial Park. This recreational improvement will provide town residents with an open outdoor area to exercise and participate in group classes. Additionally, plans are underway for a summer concert series, new camp activities and possible after-school programs for our youth. Additional funding is planned for our Summer Youth Employment Program, giving our young residents an opportunity to learn lifelong skills and gain insight into the dedication of government service. We have included funding for a Main Street Business Beautification Initiative, park improvements for a new inclusive play equipment, running a drinking water supply to Gin Park for water fountains, building upgrades and more civic engagement activities. Next slide. Moving to the investments in our organization, our de- police, our police department has been hard at work finding ways to improve public safety. The shooting this past January proved, proved the hard work of our first responders and dedication to keeping the sounds, the town safe. The department, the department has won grant money to install shot-detecting cameras in those areas with high gun violence. Dumfries competes with almost every locality for qualified police officers and personnel. Other localities have voiced their struggles with keeping police officers' positions filled. The Virginia retirement system, in addition to pay, health care and location, plays a key factor in how job seekers choose employment. The Virginia retirement system, in addition to pay, healthcare, and location, plays a key factor in how job seekers choose employment. Salaries continue to lag behind inflation rates, with inflation reaching its highest rate of nine point one percent in June of two thousand and twenty-two. As the employment landscape evolves and competition for qualified workers intensifies, we must continue investing in our most critical resource. The steps taken last year to provide, to, excuse me, improve attrition rates by increasing starting pay for police officers and providing one hundred percent employer-funded healthcare for both employees and their families resulted in our police department to date having only one vacancy. The proposed budget includes a five percent market rate adjustment for most town positions. It also supports new positions, one in our finance operation and three in our admin operations to provide assistance in human resources, civic engagement, and customer service, as well as five new police officer positions. Looking at the chart for expenditures, our administration makes up forty-one percent of the expense budget with public safety at twenty-six percent. Increases in these areas are necessary for the town to not only regain the level of customer service of pre-pandemic conditions, but also spread out workloads among qualified personnel to provide increased police protection in park areas and neighborhoods, cover increased traffic conditions during large events, and provide coverage for the new Rose Gaming Resort. Here are the highlights by focus area to reiterate our strategic plan goals. Priorities in our economic vitality focus area continue to improve key developments. Our proposed budget continues to fund the Destination Dumfries Initiative, adding it to funding for our strategic planning and updating our comprehensive plan. State law requires our comprehensive plan to be updated every five years. Our public safety focus area encompasses law enforcement as well as emergency management. With the increase in visitors to the new gaming facility, restaurant, and concert venues, police coverage is critical. That's why our proposed budget includes funding for five additional officers. These additional officers will allow us to continue to be visible throughout the community even as new residential and commercial development increases, increase traffic control, and monitor new activities while maintaining coverage around the town. Sustainability and infrastructure focus, excuse me. Sustainability and infrastructure focus area incorporates transportation, stormwater, and the natural environment. The Route One widening project is our top concern. With the design phase wrapping up and each month passing, staff increases their time and attention to the next phase of the right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation, and construction. Our MS four regulatory permit requirements are, continues to be a priority for staff. That staff is dedicated in achieving. Maintenance to our stormwater pond continues as required by our MS four program plan and annual permit. Updates to our impervious area mapping continues to ensure the town maintains an accurate depiction of newly developed development impervious areas and their impact on the water quality of Chronicle Creek. Priorities and well-manned government focus area seek to strengthen our internal controls, ensure a sound fiscal management, invest in our human capital needs. The proposed budget includes one new position in finance, which will support the implementation of audit recommendations, procurement, and enhancing our long-range planning. We will also provide three positions to operations assisting the town clerk and civic engagement events. Our proposed capital improvement plan reflects our continued efforts to complete projects currently underway. All capital projects in the current plan are funded entirely by grants and pay-as-you-go cash for fiscal year twenty-four. The CIP budget is two point three million dollars, and it includes one new project, which will provide needed upgrades to our rescue squad building for the eventual conversion to a community center. Funding continues for park improvement and police vehicles. The review and adoption of the town budget is a public process. On March thirty-first, the proposed budget document was posted and distributed on the town's website. All fiscal plan documents can be accessed directly off of the town website homepage. In addition to those fiscal plan documents, you will, excuse me. The website will continuously update it with presentations from tonight's meeting, the CIP presentation that will be given to the planning commission following the April tenth meeting, as well as an additional budget meeting on April eighteenth, where residents can come and ask more questions concerning the budget. The budget hearing for the fiscal year twenty-four budget is May second, council meeting prior to the public hearing. Citizens can provide feedback on the budget in the comment section on the website, as well as email the PIO at PIO at dumfriesva.gov. In closing, I'd like to reiterate that the fiscal year twenty-four fiscal plan was completed in adherence with sound financial practices, and our plan addresses where we currently, where we are currently, while continuing to provide a roadmap to our future.
Thank you. One, before we go past the budget review session, I'm gonna ask to make some adjustments and then add some dates to that. For budget review, council, I want you to add April, Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, also Tuesday, May the ninth. And these are just if needed, if we don't get through or through the budget. And to look at moving the public hearing, April twenty-fifth and April the ninth to add to this budget.
May ninth.
May ninth, may ninth, April twenty-fifth and May ninth. Both Tuesdays, and then look at possible adoption by the sixteenth. So we schedule, I know we got resolutions on to look at those, but I wanna add two additional budget review dates as to April twenty-fifth and May the ninth. May sixteen. Two plus fourteen, I think it's sixteen. All right, now I will open up any questions on the budget presentation, comments? Ms. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just to make sure, since I know Ms. Hill's gonna have to do the ad for the public hearing and everything, the public hearing will still be scheduled for May second, but the council may consider further after that, which is not a problem.
Okay.
Just wanna confirm, May second is still the public hearing day?
No, I think we wanna push the public hearing back, because we also wanna give the new town manager company a way in on the budget as well.
Okay, so you want the public, we have to advertise, so let's follow that show.
Yeah.
You want the public hearing advertised for May ninth or for May sixteen?
May sixteen, the second meeting in May.
So it's sixteen. It's nodding her head, so I guess we're.
Sixteen.
Thank you.
All right, council, any questions on the presentation? Mr. Phil's, move ahead.
No question, Miss Hill.
Okay, comments?
Outstanding. That's all I'm gonna say.
Mr. P.
Very, very, very good presentation put together. Janae, staff, Kim Lee, you guys did an excellent job with this, like this is, this was excellent. Have we lost one segment that I got and everything, and we'll follow. So moving on, maybe I missed it, but where are we at with, I see that in the right here, the camera approval plan on page fifty, if everybody wanted to tune into page fifty, that we're, I see here it says, first of all, are we in a position yet to name this building yet?
It's played on the agenda, naming policy. It's the last thing on our agenda tonight.
Yeah, that's the policy. I think he wants to know if we can do it yet.
Right, that's what I'm.
We haven't adopted a policy yet, so it's the last thing on our agenda tonight?
So we can do it tonight?
We haven't adopted the agenda yet.
We have not adopted a naming policy yet. It's the last item on our agenda. Once we adopt the policy, we agree to a policy, then we can move forward. After we adopt the policy, so you wanna add an agenda item after that? But the last item on the agenda tonight is a naming policy that we have not yet talked about or adopted.
All right, are you open now? Any other questions about the presentation or the budget documents that we'll put in your mailboxes?
Mr. Brown, I have a quick question. So mainly just for clarification. I'm looking at the revenue, the pie chart, we had sixty-six percent of our revenue was local taxes. Then I'm looking at our tax rate versus the rest of the local areas, which were pretty much down one of the lowest areas. We're looking to receive more revenue in two thousand and twenty-four than our local taxes, and not have an increase?
So local taxes encompasses many line items, not just real estate taxes. So that slide is specific toward real estate taxes. As far as revenue, the jump really comes from gaming tax and meals tax.
And thank you. And the other people, five, please, for us. Is that something that we can increase that number based upon what we see as the roles is coming to do? Do we have the capacity to do more hires on that side?
In next fiscal year or the fiscal year after that?
This is fiscal year twenty-four.
So if we will have, this current plan calls for funding twenty-five positions for admin and police officers. So we can add more, but I'd like to point out that the hiring process is difficult. And you can always keep, once we fund it, it's always there. It's not always, if you have to realize, sometimes we're not able to just hire that many people for the reasons that I said. All the localities are fighting for good police officers, and they're offering bonuses, and so people are just going, they're jumping from place to place to place. So while we might be up two and then we're down one, and then we had some retirements and things like that. So the short answer to your question is yes, we could always add more positions. But keep in mind, we'd like to try to get fully staffed next year, see how the roles begins to operate, and then plan accordingly to that.
Okay, do we have to come back and readjust the budget if there's a need before we go back to the presentation?
We do, we would.
Okay, so I'm trying to anticipate and help our community, because at one point when we started talking about the role of the Department of Security and crime and stuff like that, so I wanna make sure that with the revenue coming in, that we kind of use some of that toward policing and traffic control and stuff like that. So I think there's going to be a need for that sooner than later.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'm trying to get all my stuff together, of course, I got a lot of pages and stuff open here. So I have a few questions. So going back to my paperwork here, investments in our community. I'm happy to see the plans for, so I'm on slide seventy-two, forty-two, thank you for getting there. So I'm very happy to see all the investments in our community, the youth employment, the Main Street beautification, those are things that we talked about, so thank you for figuring those in as a part of the budget moving forward. The building upgrades, we all talked about that. I'm really happy to see those. I think that as we grow as a community and we are bringing in more revenue, it's really a good idea for the community to see us reinvesting those additional revenues back into our community with, for instance, the youth employment and the beautification, so that the community can see that we are investing in our youth. And, you know, Prince William County has youth employment, but for us to be able to bring youth employment to our actual citizens, it gives them additional options. So they can go to Prince William County, but they can also, you know, have an option right here in Dumfries. So I'm very proud that we're able to offer that to them, so thank you for figuring that in. The Main Street beautification, another thing, as we are working hard to change the face of Dumfries, being able to beautify Main Street is a really important part of that, so I'm really happy to see that as well. Also, as we talk about the parks, I am assuming that as we go, as we are talking about that, that also includes the water?
Yes, I mentioned the water.
Okay, cool. I'm sorry, I missed that, because I was just trying to capture my notes, so that I wouldn't miss anything, but I probably will anyway. Investments in our organization, market rate increase, can you tell me a little bit about what that means? You may have mentioned it, and maybe I missed it again, as I was trying to make sure I wrote my questions down, page forty-three. It talks about increased police staff, increased administrative staff, and then market rate increase. What exactly is meant by market rate increase? Because I know that we are paying our staff competitively. I'm proud of how we have increased the salaries for our police officers and have made those wages very competitive to a point where we have been privileged to attract officers from neighboring squads and what have you. Also, our total compensation package includes free healthcare that is unprecedented. So I know that we are doing things to make ourselves very competitive. So help me understand what exactly is meant by that. Let's talk about that out loud for everyone.
It's on page sixty-nine again.
Thank you. Let's talk about that out loud, please, for everyone's edification.
A market rate adjustment is a salary increase of five percent.
Okay, so, thank you. Last year, the salary increases were eight percent?
Yes, ma'am.
And so now we're talking about five percent? So that too is unprecedented. To go one year from eight percent to follow that up the next year with five percent, that is pretty significant.
It is, but it is also what our surrounding localities are doing as well.
Okay, so our surrounding localities are giving market increases of eight percent and then five percent, because I mean, the government's not giving that, and I thought they were setting a standard.
No, the state, I'm not quite sure what the state is proposing for salary increases, but local governments, at the last CAO meeting, most local governments are proposing increases between five and six percent over the percentages, the large percentages that were given last year as well.
Okay, prior to the last year then, what was the standard?
It varied. Sometimes it can range anywhere from, obviously can range from one all the way up to, you know, eight percent like it was. Typically, it's around two or three percent.
Right, that's what I'm used to.
With the state government. But unfortunately, inflation is making it so that people cannot afford housing. They cannot pay for gas. They have to choose between food and medication. And I don't live in Northern Virginia, but it is very expensive to live here.
Absolutely. I know that that's one of the things that inflation is, is definitely something that's hurting a lot of people's pockets, especially with the cost of healthcare. However, we pay for healthcare here, so I think that that. However, we pay full healthcare here. Um, so I think that that's a part, because that is a part of our total compensation package. Again, don't get me wrong, I am not trying to take money out of anyone's pockets. I just want to make sure that as we are looking at these dollars and the way these dollars are being allocated, that we are doing so fiscally responsibly. And, uh, again, I'm not trying to take money out of anybody's pockets, but when we're looking at total compensation packages and we're talking about inflation and, and considering that we are paying full healthcare, it makes, it makes our, it makes the way we're paying for market, you know, it makes our market standard a tad bit different when you compare it to everyone else's, because everyone else is not paying full healthcare packages. Do you see what I'm saying?
I do.
So I just.
What, what do you, what do you want to propose to see this as?
I wanted an explanation and I wanted to talk about it. That's what I was asking, how about? Okay, let's see. The other question that I had was as far as the positions are concerned. So at some point, over the past few years, couple of years, we've lost the position title for treasurer. And it became Director of Finance. And as I look here and we move into F Y twenty four, I see that we still have it listed here as Director of Finance. I, I need us to be intentional about getting that title back to being Director of Finance Treasurer. Because we need to make sure that we have a treasurer of record. I mean, that's a simple thing, but I, I, I mean, we need to have that on, on the bottom. We need to have a treasurer of record.
So are, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are you proposing that to be someone separate from the finance director?
Not at all.
Okay.
Not at all. And that, that's all my questions for the moment. Thank you.
All right, so I, I'll jump in here. And most, most of mine come from the, the budget book. And I will, um, I, I was, I was kind of start when she left off with kind of like an organization chart. So we'll go to, this is, this is my proposal on the org chart and I'll pass this out there so y'all can follow along. I wrote it out, but I won't forget. That's one of these, uh, this is. What, what I'm proposing as an organization chart, if you turn the page. Who pages is that? Nineteen? Page nineteen in your budget books? This organization chart. And so at the top, the top of the chart, we have the citizens of the town, which, then you have the mayor and the town council. Um, then under that, you have, uh, town manager, which would be council selected. Beside them with a town attorney, which is selected by the council. Then we look under, going into your point, uh, Vice Mayor, I had that as well. Uh, Director Finance slash Treasurer, which would be appointed by the council, as well as a town clerk who would be council appointed. Um, then I will look, you already have on there, planning and community development, as well as public safety and public works. Um, in your proposed budget, you have a human resources coordinator. We'll put that too under the town manager's preview. And the administrative department. Following under there, I would like to, to outline all the positions so it can be seen in the org chart. From the, uh, in the public works department, the, the deputy director, stormwater management, stormwater maintenance worker, maintenance technician, maintenance worker. And these are all based off of what's in the, the, the back of the budget proposals. Customer service representatives, uh, I think they collect all the money, is that right? Those customer service, the B M V select? They're collecting revenue. So I would think that customer service representative, customer service manager and the finance accountants will all fall in the finance department, being that they all are collecting and bringing in all the revenues for the town. So I would think that the finance will keep accounting and traction of the money that's coming in. Under the strategic planning and data analysis, I guess, under admin, uh, the proposed deputy town clerk, under the civic engagement, as well as the events coordinator. Uh, under the community development, looking at the planner, the permit technician. Under the police department, um, police, of, of course, the chief of police is up top, then you got your captain. Uh, in the budget, you had three sergeants, but I'm looking at rearranging. We need to go back to possibly four sergeants. So we can have, uh, two day squads and two night squad leaders, so you can have four. And then we, we didn't do the, um, five positions last year, so we only had nine.
We did one. We, we funded one. So we shorted four and then we added five again.
In this, in this, you're showing nineteen, but I'm, I'm gonna go back to looking at fourteen and, and one admin. And, and to help us out, which is why I pushed out the other, here's, if, if you taking notes, here's what I want you to bring back in the next meeting for us all to see. You know, as, as we look at, um, the strategic focus areas as well in there. We added one at the retreat that I think was, was kind of missing up there. We added civic engagement. So when you look at our, our things, I think they were called the livable, but we all agreed that we wanted. And it was something we had asked for last year. We asked for a civic engagement, uh, department. We, we asked for that. We got a, uh, we got a director at home, but so when we look at our, our strategic areas of focus, well managed government, the economic development, infrastructure, public safety, and then civic engagement was the, was the fifth area. And we were, uh, pretty steadfast at our retreat and wanted to add that as a strategic focus area. Um, and I think that some goals that could go along with it, going back to the retreat notes, and I think it was in our packet today as we approved. Uh, we wanted to, um, and, and in all the departments, I think, if we're looking at increases, there should be some additional goals and some, some additional structures. Um, I'm requesting that the, the council get job descriptions and salary ranges for all of these positions as in this budget. So we need job descriptions for all of these jobs and salary ranges. If we're going to approve the budget, we need to approve it with ranges. We need to know the top and we need to know the bottom. We're asking for five new positions. We have no descriptions of these new descriptions, and so we want salary ranges for all of them. We're also, um, on page eleven, this is just a little note, the demographics. Uh, and I noticed this in the last two years, the demographics are kind of off on our numbers. Uh, it says forty-three percent white population in the town of Dumfries, when I think that should be twenty-three percent. So we need to check that. Because we think we're thirty-eight percent Hispanic, uh, so those numbers, and they don't add up. It adds up to way more than a hundred percent when you look at it. So check the demographics in the budget. I'm just, I'm just giving notes to bring back. Just bring the notes. These are the notes I wrote down. I'll let you go. Thank you. All right, um, so demographics, um. As we go through the budget, you know, some simple stuff. Page thirteen, the pitches, we took pitches today. I just said, I said, all these pitches be consistent and change. Page thirteen. Because I don't want counsel.
You didn't have an age.
I know, we got it now. I know, I got, I, I wrote that down for you. I'm just going through all the notes as we go. It's page thirteen, those pitches changed. Um, talked about the org chart, budget process. I'll come back to the goals on twenty three. I got some, some goals I want to add to the budget calendar. Um. As we turn to page forty one in the budget book, just want to point out, I, I think you did a good job in your presentation and highlighted the, uh, the revenue increases, which were good. Uh, I want to ask about the, the rental tax revenue. Where does that come from? Just to be sure, because the rental, the rental tax, hold on please, is going from ninety to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. I just want to know, what is that attributed to against?
Right, it's vehicle rental tax.
Enterprises jumping, more people are traveling. Good, thank you. Just wanted to make sure I was, I was capturing that right. And then transient is because you're expecting the roads to open up by January.
Yeah, that's hotel.
Okay, so, no, no, I just, I seen the increase. I was just wanting to highlight. And then, so you projected the roads open January, explains that huge meals tax increase. I just wanted to, because it, it's jumping over a million dollars in meals tax on this.
Yes, so we're on track to collect a million dollars already in meals tax, um, this year. Um, that's why I specifically talked about that there are eight new restaurants opening up. Um, if you do the math, if they open up, that provides about twenty-three thousand dollars for each restaurant in meals tax each month between January and, um, June.
Okay.
Um, but the gaming tax was based off of them opening up in, in March, right?
Okay.
Um, and I believe, I had a conversation this morning, um, with Rose, um, their engineer, that they are pushing toward a January opening date. Um, the, the, the numbers that directly come, that are the biggest increase from the revenue we're expecting from the roads, um, are based off of March projection, March openings, not January. So we're open in January, some of these numbers may be even bigger than what we see.
All right, cool. I'm just checking with the re, now, it looked like we got more cigarette stores, but our cigarette tax is going down. So I'm just, our revenue projections, I was just curious if people quit.
So what happened was during COVID, people couldn't go out. And so people were at home smoking cigarettes, watching Netflix all day. And so our, if you look at past, um, um, previous years, our cigarette revenue went up very high. So we're projecting it to go back down to like normal levels.
All right. That's the main thing, revenue. Now we can go to, uh, individual department expenditures. We can start with the admin department. Page fifty-three, uh, one of the, the performance measures, and, and I'm, I'm gonna propose across the board, the council people are doing it or say that, that we can bring this back. Can you just show us all of these numbers with a three percent market rate increase across the board versus a, a five percent? Uh, also, uh, one of the performance measures I like to see is a G F O A Triple Crown. So we have a performance measure of getting a distinguished budget presentation award, and we've gotten that for, this is our fourth year or fifth year? It's our fifth year? Fourth year, fourth and second year receiving that award. Um, so I want to, I want to raise the bar in performance measures. And the Triple Crown recognized governments who received three G F O A awards. One, a certificate achievement for excellence in financial reporting, one for a popular annual financial reporting award, and a distinguished budget presentation award. So I want to raise the ante, and I believe that, uh, with the addition of our accountants and our financial, that we can, uh, achieve this Triple Crown award. I seen it featured last month in the, uh, B M L magazine, and I was like, man, we, we gotta go after the Triple Crown. We, I've been setting the bar at the budget presentation, you know, so I want to raise the bar. So add that as a performance measurement, the G F O A Triple Crown. All right. Also, uh, while we're talking about all the positions and all of that, so as we go through there, uh, planning and community development. All right, so in, also in our admin department, has there been funding in there that I requested to establish a lobbyist for our legislative agenda?
Um, there is not.
Okay, so we can play with that, with that two percent. So I would like to see that in the next, uh, presentation. All right, turning over to our municipal building, page sixty-seven. Um, in there, we have the, the revenue that's coming in and the expenses that's paid. The one expense I don't see, how much do we pay, uh, Tri Mart for, uh, what they do? Like, is that an expense? How do you calculate that? Where's that shown at? Because they are a property management company. So, um, where is the contract shown for Tri Mart? I see utilities, maintenance and operations, taxes and fees, and how much we're contributing to our reserves. And, 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 and I forgot on the revenue side. I did have a question on that. If that went up like a hundred thousand, is that, we got some leases that went up or expenses on the revenue side of the municipal building? Sorry, I had to go back because I'm looking at expenses. I got a revenue.
Yes.
So the revenue shot up on the municipal building. Let me go back. I missed that. I don't know why they marked it, but as I'm looking at revenues, municipal building. Town owned property, page forty-three. Yep, I circled it. It jumped from six hundred and one to seven hundred. Page forty-three?
My pages aren't the same as your pages.
Okay. Is it, you don't have this budget book right here?
Um, oh, no, because I had to give by for the public.
Okay. So, well, it jumped to seven hundred. Do, do we have some extra leases or is that just an increase in rent revenues?
So we're not fully rented out, so.
Yeah, what, how many vacancies? One, two?
I think two, but one is in the works. J two plans on moving over, so we'll get additional.
So there'll be a lease to come back for us, okay. All right, so then on the expenses, I'm just asking, how much are we paying on the contract? How much are they collecting out of the rents?
I'm sorry, I don't know that number off the top of my head.
Okay, so just in the, in the next, uh, that's just a question. How much is their contract and what are we bringing in that? Um, all right, sixty-nine, police department, goal, performance measures. All right, we, we went up, they wanted two, two, two additional performance measures I like to see in the police department. They've been steady for the last three years. Um, and one of the things we haven't talked about, I know in a while, Councilman Phil's has been a proponent of this. I think it's time for us to set a goal for our department to become fully accredited. All right, and so we set that goal and that benchmarks, um, I think is achievable based on, uh, all of the updates. We talked about it when we brought the debt, the use of deadly force policy forward and all those other things. And I think a second goal besides accreditation is also to finish the policy manual. And I think they're already working on that right now. And so two performance goals to add to their department is accreditation and a policy manual. I think that's feasible, um, and we can start to really see some and give the community some results of that. I think a fully accredited department will do good. All right, chief, chief?
For sir.
All right, I like that. I like that go to that too. All right. Moving on to. We go back to, you got a lot of good stuff in your letter that's not in there, like, that's not in the, the budget. I'd like you to take a lot of the stuff you wrote in your town manager letter and put it under highlights. Because I have to go back and forth. So the stuff you put in your highlights, and I, I'll read it to you. Yeah, and your town manager letter aren't highlighted in the actual budget. So it was hard for me to find what it was if I didn't read it and underline and go through it. So, uh, you, you talked about, you know, the, the investment in infrastructures and buildings, right? The capital improvement plan, um, in that, um, there, there's no details. How many vehicles are we buying for the police? Or it just says fleet vehicles, and then it has this, it actually says one vehicle, and then it has this two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar number. And I'm like, I know that's not one vehicle.
It, it works out to be one. Uh, wait, I'm sorry, it doesn't work out to be one. I think the final year works out to be, uh, three vehicles.
How, how, how much is the vehicle? I thought the vehicles with all the equipment were ready at about seventy to ninety thousand? Fully outfitted?
Uh, no, it was closer to like sixty-five.
Sixty-five, sweet. So the C I P, I don't, I don't have it here in front. Nobody got their C I P? I didn't break my C I P, but there's this, let me see that, please. Thank you. All right, let me go to what you have in that C I P. So twenty twenty-four, you had proposed two hundred and ninety-five thousand. All right, and it says, this project provides the needs for all more resources to be allocated to fleet replacement schedule funded to allow for the purchase of one vehicle for the town fleet and paying off the existing capital lease rent. So whatever ended, I was like, one vehicle? Two hundred and ninety-five thousand? I don't believe it. That was a lie. All right, so I know that's not one vehicle. So if you can.
It should be twelve.
Yes, change that. Uh, and then it says two hundred and fifty for twenty twenty-five, and then a hundred and fifty-five thousand for twenty twenty-six and that. So the narrative, and you got to go back and look at the whole narrative in the cap, because there's no description on the park improvements. Although you did write your capital improvements in your letter. So you wrote it in your letter, but you didn't translate it over into the, the plan. So you talked about, uh, in the park, fitness court, you talked. So you talked about, uh, in the park, the fitness court, you talked about improvements to drinking water fountain, you talked about the covered pavilion, you talked about accessible play equipment. Funding has been increased for police vehicles, unfinished doorwork. So you wrote that here, but once, if somebody is not reading your letter and they look, and they can't find it. So they don't, so we're looking, and I read this, it says we got two hundred thousand dollars for park renovations, and I can read it to you, so you know what it says.
No, I, I know what you're saying, I'm, I'm just saying that it's never been that way, and so I was using existing formatting to get the budget together and keep moving forward. It never provided that level of detail, so.
I did some of my previous capital improvement.
Okay, I just went off of one from last year.
Alright, so if you can, just put descriptions in, okay, so for last, thank you. On that, so I won't go through any more of the capital improvement, thank you for letting me use you, I got mine. But I did read it, see, I knew what was in there. Alright, uh, accreditation, I talked about deputy town clerk, human resources coordinator, office customer service. Alright, so those are, um, improvement investments listed and outlined in budgets, page forty-five. Forty-five, okay, cool, I am good with all of, uh, my questions in, are you? And so, um, job descriptions on all of these positions, salary ranges. Um, and, um, also we need to know all the contracts that we had that same year, you know, the breakout, because, uh, wanna make sure that we're managing and seeing where we're at with, uh, I know I said Tri-Mark, I don't know, TSA with other contracts we have, to see what, what our budget and where we're at on that. Trash, all of that other stuff. Alright, does anybody else have any other questions? What move, you do, one more, okay, vice mayor.
I would like for the council to consider one of the first tasks when the town manager gets here. One of the first tasks for the town manager to undertake is to look into getting a comprehensive compensation and workforce analysis study done for the staff. And I suggest this because as you are asking for position descriptions, and as we're looking at salaries and things, in the time that we've sat on this diaries, there have been numerous changes to position titles. As we look over, just looking over the budget books from twenty-twenty-one, two, and three, we see position titles that have gone from, you know, small to very large. We see, um, positions that are, or, we, we see a lot of changes. We see things that have happened without explanation, and we're not here to micromanage how these positions come about, but when we've asked for job descriptions, there aren't a lot of job descriptions. We've been told that here are some, but we don't have all of them. Or there's a contractor that's getting them, but we can't find all of them and things of that nature. And as we sit here, and it is our due diligence to approve a budget that also says we need more positions here or there, it's, we're not able to fiscally be responsible for how many positions we're going to approve or what the budget looks like to say we need funding allocated for growth in these position areas if we don't know whether or not there is a need for these additional positions. Or we don't know whether or not, you know, we have the proper amount of people in said positions, or whether or not these positions are being filled by the appropriate people for that matter. So I think it's important that we have an outside company come in and do a complete workforce analysis and do a complete compensation study. Because I wanna make sure that for the people who we have here, they are the right people, they are titled correctly, they are being paid, paid approb, appropriately. We also wanna make sure for the people who have been in the town of Dumfries for very many years, that they are being paid, paid appropriately, because oftentimes what you see as well is that when new people come in, they're getting paid, you know, and I know that one of the conversations that we had with Jonay is that there were some adjustments made so that, um, compensation was, was adjusted so that the new people were not coming and making, you know, a, a lot of money and people who were here for a longer time weren't making enough, and so there were adjustments made, but there's still maybe some additional adjustments that need to be made. So I just wanna make sure that everyone is being paid fairly and that no one's salaries are being overinflated or titles are not being overinflated, or that we don't have titles that are not necessary to what we need done here in the town of Dumfries. And so I just wanna make sure that everything is just being done as it needs to be done. And the best time to do that is as we are changing the helm and someone new is coming in. I just wanna make sure that everything's being done the way it needs to be done, and I think now is the best time to do that, so I'm asking the council, I don't know if this is a vote that we need to do now, or do we wait until the new town manager actually starts? Okay, okay, cause I, I just, I want everybody to just maybe give some thought to that so that when the time comes, we can do a vote and make that one of the, one of the first things, one of the first orders of business. This is very important to me, especially as we're going into this new budget, because that is something that will need to be budgeted for, cause that is going to cost couple of, couple of dollars in order to get done. Thank you.
And, and, and I just want to, um, add to, to my reason why, and, and it might not need to be three percent for everybody, but I think what'd help us is if we see all the positions that we started off in, if you look at the fiscal year twenty-three budget, and you go back and you look at all the positions that we approved, you bring us back all those starting salaries in June thirtieth of last year, and you show us all the, from the, from the market rate increase that we gave last year to whatever other bonuses or job title changes or whatever happened. I think that'd help us to be able to look at and say, okay, here's why, you know, we gave more than an eight percent market rate in some areas last year, to whatever, for whatever reason. You know, and so looking at that, but because we don't know what the salary range was or what the cap was, it was a, it was an unlimited type cap that we didn't prove in on the budget, so we need to now know what's the cap and what's the range on there. So that when we approve it, it's like, I, I'm not going for a budget that I don't know what's in it anymore. So, once I get the details and I'm comfortable, then I move it to a public hearing, and we go from there. But, and, and long as I'm not comfortable, I'm not ready to move to a public hearing, so. You guys, everybody else still have a question? Alright, we'll move on, thank you for. Alright, now we move to our action items. First action item is a consideration of ordinance to adapt the town for all three of these. Um, and I'm asking Ms. Pendak, or clerk, to change this date to the sixteenth. Do I, do we just, it's simple date change for advertising or?
Well, you still need to initiate a, like, who goes to public hearings, so yes, she could drop these and just change it to May sixteenth.
Do I have to do them individually, can I just do them all three?
You can do it for three together.
Okay, all three together. Alright, so we got, um, we got three considerations for action tonight. Consideration for ord, ordinance to adopt the town fee schedule, uh, the schedule of public hearing date for May the sixteenth. Consideration of a resolution to adopt the twenty-four through twenty-eight town capital improvement plan for May the sixteenth, and a consideration of ordinance to appropriate funds for our fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. Uh, public hearing consideration for May the sixteenth.
Mayor Sulu, second.
Alright, this has been moved, and second, is there any discussion on any of the ordinances, the resolutions, motion? Okay, seeing no discussion, you guys are discussed now. Alright, Councilman Pete?
Yes.
Councilman Fields?
Yes.
Councilwoman Peterson?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Chair Proten?
Yes.
Vice mayor? And then that's a yes for me. Alright, those motions carry. Y'all alright, y'all need a, y'all need a stretch break? Alright, that motion carries seven zero. Alright, next on the agenda is, is, uh, the naming and renaming of town park facilities, parks, he was there, parks and street policy guidelines. A town attorney, I'll turn it over to you for all the changes that was made and worked.
Um, Mr. Mayor, the packet that you have in front of you, uh, with the assistance of, of Park Hill, uh, includes all the changes that were, um, presented by members of council at, uh, a meeting, I believe, two meetings, three meetings ago, um, to specifically add, um, parks and streets, a lot of parks were in there to include streets, and then I collectively called them government facilities, the document a little bit better, uh, easier to read. Then three point O, um, making it must instead of should in terms of the criteria. And under four point O, um, clarifying with more detail how the nomination is to be submitted and that there is to be a public hearing, um, under section five on renaming to add the additional requirement that a request be accompanied by petition signed by fifty eligible voters. And I believe that takes care of the, the necessary changes. There's some repetition as you go throughout this news, cleanup in order to make those changes that make sense in the document.
Alright, council, any, uh, questions? On the, uh, the naming and renaming, so I guess, no one's gonna do it? Alright, Ms. Pete, any questions on the policy, see, just count it, okay? Okay, Mr. Brown? What do y'all wanna do with the policy?
I, I motion to, uh, approve the policy as written.
Second, okay, it's been motioned and second, any discussion? I see no discussion, I call for the question. Councilman Pete?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Fields?
Yes.
Councilman Peterson?
Yes.
Chair Proten?
I.
Vice mayor?
Yes.
And that's a yes for me, that motion carries six zero. Seven zero, I counted it myself. Alright, at that point? Yes, sir. Huh? Alright, any, 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 uh, any announcements for the weekend? Uh, Director of Civil Gavages, did you ask some announcements? Oh, no one's watching, don't worry, but the council needs to know, there's an Easter egg hunt on Saturday. Uh, cause I forgot to announce these, sorry. There's an Easter egg hunt on Saturday at the park, and, I don't know.
The Easter egg hunt is at ten thirty A.M. park? The Easter egg hunt with Pillar Church is going to be Saturday, April the eighth, at ten thirty A.M. And the town of Dumfries is partnering with Pillar Church for that event. Also, April the twenty-second is our grand opening for our Market on Main, which is our Dumfries Farmers Market. Um, to date, we have about fifteen vendors registered for that, and it looks like we may have two to three produce vendors. I'm sorry, Farmers Market, nine A.M. until two P.M. And that's gonna be here at Garrison Park. And then on April the fifteenth, we have our Dumfries Cleanup and Storm Drain Marketing Day. That will begin at nine A.M., and that's gonna start here at Main Street. And then April thirteenth through the fourteenth, we have road paving that's gonna take place on Williamstown Drive, Howard Street, and Rose Hill, and those are all the announcements.
Well, thank you.
I have an adjustment.
An adjustment, alright.
I'm sorry, the paving won't start until a couple days later, it won't start on Monday, it'll probably start on Wednesday.
Okay, alright, alright, at this time, this meeting is adjourned.